Stormwater services and separating it from the wastewater services. Development of this separate stormwater utility focused on creating a defensible and equitable method of establishing user costs for services provided. Frequently during this process, stormwater permit requirements were mentioned in order to explain the funding level necessary to meet the minimum program requirements. Parallel to the stormwater utility development process, staff were in sometimes contentious negotiations with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality to renew the existing stormwater permit. Pressure on the DEQ both from the federal government and some from successful lawsuits against Clarkland County, Washington County, Portland, and Gresham resulted in more stringent requirements and substantially greater program and project obligations in our renewed permits. Because staff believe that meeting these requirements will materially impact all city departments, businesses, residents, and the development community, we feel it's important that we explain to the council and the citizens and help them understand and hopefully support the staff activities that will be obligated by this permit. And that's why we're here this evening is to give you some idea of the circumstances we're going to have to face in meeting this permit. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Nodich, our stormwater water quality supervisor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frances. Good evening, Mayor Peterson, councilors, and everyone in attendance tonight.
Can you speak closer?
Sure. My name is John Nodich. I'm the stormwater quality supervisor at Public Works Stormwater Services. I'm here with two staff members this evening, Justin Boynton and Heather Dimke, flow monitoring analysts also with Public Works Stormwater Services. On behalf of the three of us, thank you for having us here tonight. I'd like to open with first providing some context for tonight's discussion by first identifying the two core primary issues with urban stormwater management. As urban areas such as Salem develop, there's an increase in the amount of impervious surface area or areas where water is unable to infiltrate the soil. As a result of that impervious area, we construct stormwater sewer systems to collect and convey that water to streams. That brings up the first concern of stormwater management, and that is in regard to water quantity. With those conveyance systems, we increase the amount of flow as well as the velocity of stormwater discharges to those receiving water bodies. In addition to that, as it rains in our urban environment, there's literally a cleansing of that urban environment. When it rains, it has the potential to pick up pollutants. A number of these pollutants are identified or illustrated on the left-hand side of this illustration. I personally think about the only one that's missing is somebody standing on top of their roof pouring moss treatment. But otherwise, there's a number of good illustrations here. The impacts are to water quality. Within the Federal Clean Water Act is a program referred to as the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. This provides the authority to the Environmental Protection Agency to control direct discharges to local water bodies. Within this program, there's a component referred to as municipal separate storm sewer system or the MS-4 program. This program issues permits to municipal discharges such as the city of Salem for the collection, conveyance, and discharge of stormwater discharges to local water bodies. At this point, I want to emphasize that this is indeed a separate system. What that means is the city of Salem collects and conveys its stormwater discharges in a system that is separate from the sanitary sewer. A key point with this is that that means these stormwater discharges are not treated in a traditional sense prior to discharge to the creeks. So they're not sent to Willow Lake. Conditions of the MS-4 permit are implemented through a five-year permit. The ultimate objective of that permit is to reduce the quantity of pollutants and stormwater discharges to the maximum extent practicable. Now, the city of Salem maintains compliance with that objective in part by developing and implementing a stormwater management plan. The DEQ sets prescriptive language for this management plan within the MS-4 permit. This plan also functions as the foundation for the city's stormwater management program. And it does so by identifying specific activities the city will implement for the duration of the permit. These activities are referred to as best management practices and really encompass the citywide activities that compose the stormwater management program. I just went through the background of the MS-4 permit, and this illustrates it for you, summarizes it. The MS-4 permit is issued through the Clean Water Act, the component of that being the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. It's this MS-4 permit and the requirements the DEQ writes within it that directs the city of Salem to develop a stormwater management plan. Within that plan are the best management practices or the activities that the city will implement as part of its stormwater management program. Key point that I want to make in this slide is that the city's stormwater management plan is incorporated by reference into the MS-4 permit. What that means is in order for the city to remain in compliance with that permit, it must implement and complete all the obligations within both the MS-4 permit itself as well as the stormwater management plan. This slide provides you with a brief history of Salem's involvement with the MS-4 program. And the dates themselves aren't as important as the context of this slide. You'll note here at the bottom, as of December 29th of 2010, the city received its third MS-4 permit. What that means is the city now has over a decade of experience with the MS-4 program as well as implementing its stormwater management program. As a result of that, we've moved in a phase beyond establishment or creation of new programs. And really, the expectations of DEQ is that we are refining those programs, continuing to identify ways that we're reducing the amount of pollutants and stormwater discharges. And more specifically, we should be identifying quantitatively progress toward meeting those The permit itself can be categorized into two different sets of requirements. On the left-hand side are requirements of the stormwater management plan. And as I indicated, the Department of Environmental Quality identifies components of that stormwater management plan within the permit. These are the topics of those contents. On the right-hand side are additional requirements of the permit. These identify specific studies or monitoring objectives or requirements as well as specific analyses that we have to conduct to remain in compliance with the permit. Now, a number of these topics and requirements have been present in previous iterations of the permit. However, this third version of the permit is much more prescriptive in nature than previous iterations of it. There's a couple of reasons for that. The first is that DEQ had an objective to add clarity and enforceability to this version of the permit. This came as a result of pressure from third parties, both at the local level with DEQ as well as EPA at the federal level, to add that level of enforceability. Previous iterations of this permit had some unclear language, and so it really put DEQ and EPA as well in a really challenge to identify compliance with this permit. So that was one of DEQ's primary objectives with making the more prescriptive nature of this version of the permit. And for the remainder of this presentation, myself, Justin, and Heather are going to be discussing some of the more influential topics of this permit and how they will impact city operations. First topic that I'd like to discuss is the construction site runoff control program or otherwise referred to as an erosion control program. The intent of this is more or less to prevent what's happening in these lower three illustrations or these figures. The permit would do so by actually reducing the current threshold for the erosion control program to 1,000 square feet of land disturbance on any type of project. What that would require is an erosion control plan review by city staff. In doing so, it also require the city to implement procedures that are consistent with the state DEQ permit, which is the 1200C program for construction activities. In addition to that requirement, it would also require the city to document inspection criteria for site inspections as well as document enforcement and response procedures. What this does is add another layer of consistency so that it doesn't matter if it's a city project or a private contractor conducting the work, the inspection and enforcement criteria are the same. An example of that is the lower right-hand corner. What this actually is, there's a catch basin here and there's inlet protection, so some bone bags. What you can just barely see in the lighting is there's sediment going around this catch basin and downstream. I can tell you this picture right here is the local creek. That's the discharge. There's the creek. So this is what this program is meaning to prevent. The MS-4 permit will also significantly change how the city implements its education and outreach program. It does this by requiring the city to develop and implement a targeted outreach strategy or plan. Within that plan, we'll be required to identify specific pollutants that we would like to target as well as the media and tools and messages that we will use to approach various audiences. We'll also be required to measure how those tools are being used. The outreach efforts are intended to target both the residents of Salem as well as city staff. So you can imagine that the media used, the tools used, and the message may vary depending on whether it's the city staff or the public for the same pollutant. The city must also conduct an effectiveness evaluation, which means that the city will be required to demonstrate how behavioral change has occurred as a result of its outreach efforts. So how do you go about doing that? It's a great question. Again, on the lower right-hand side, this is Dump No Waste placard that is often put on by volunteer groups around the city at the catch basins. How do you know or how do you demonstrate to the DEQ that those are effective in changing behavior? Those are the types of questions that we're going to need to address in this effectiveness evaluation. What are the types of things that we can do to measure behavioral change? Do we survey those folks? Do we observe them? The next topic I'd like to discuss is the post-construction control program. And I want to emphasize, don't get lost in the details of this illustration. I'm going to point out and highlight the key take-home message. This is a hypothetical rain event where it starts out with relatively high intensity, gradually diminishes. In a forested or unurbanized watershed, you would generally see a delayed response by the creek, slow to increase in flow, gradually decrease in flow. As a result of urbanization or the amount of impervious surfaces that typically occur in urban areas, we actually see this quick response of the creek where flow rapidly rises and rapidly falls. For the last 30 years, the city of Salem has required detention facilities to be installed with most construction projects or new development. Those detention facilities effectively get us a little bit closer to mimicking this more natural system. We effectively move this peak and retain that water temporarily so it doesn't overcharge or surcharge the downstream system, including the creeks. So the MS-4 permit is moving us beyond detention and moving the city of Salem more toward onsite retention and infiltration with the objective of optimizing these two methods of retaining or infiltrating stormwater. Again, this is pursuing the effort of trying to get us closer to this response in a stream. Examples of the ability to do those types of things is to install bioswells, rain gardens, impervious pavement. While reducing the flow and volume of stormwater to the downstream system, they also act as a filter thereby removing pollutants and improving water quality before those discharges meet the streams. So the permit will require that the majority of new and redevelopment projects in the city of Salem will capture and treat 80% of their runoff, which is the equivalent of 1.38 inches in 24 hours of rainfall. That would apply to the threshold of 1,300 square feet of impervious surface area for single-family residential projects as well as 10,000 square feet of impervious surface area for parcel-based projects. These are things such as transportation or commercial properties. I mentioned that the permit prioritizes or optimizes infiltration retention facilities. There's also the requirement for the city to identify and remove barriers that inhibit their implementation. So those are the things such as in code or design standards that may prevent those types of facilities from being constructed. Along with having those facilities constructed, there's also an obligation on behalf of the city to assure that they're functioning properly. So the city will be developing a long-term inspection and maintenance program for those facilities. That program would apply to both public and private facilities. And many of you are likely aware that city staff has undergone the effort over the last year, year and a half to develop a stormwater dedicated chapter to Salem Revised Code as well as revised stormwater design standards. Those efforts are a significant step in meeting the requirements of this portion of the Now, the previous discussion was in regard to requirements for the city's stormwater management plan that DEQ has prescribed within the MS-4 permit. These are some of the additional requirements of that permit outside the stormwater management plan. The first is to require the city to conduct an assessment of the impacts of stormwater discharges to local streams. This is called a hydromodification assessment. The challenge with this hydromodification assessment is that the city has not conducted one before or not in the sense of what DEQ is describing in the permit. It's also the challenge that we have 90 miles of streams within city limits and 13 different watersheds. The advantage that we have is we have considerable historic information in both the Clark and Pringle Creek watersheds. And we've actually talked to DEQ about implementing a more targeted approach with this assessment so that we can utilize the data that's existing, build on that, and potentially apply it to other watersheds throughout the city. That might be the approach that we can take with this first requirement of a hydromodification study. Second requirement is to conduct a retrofit strategy. You recall that in the previous slide I discussed how there would be a requirement for infiltration and retention facilities for new and reconstruction projects. The intent of this retrofit study is to address the existing infrastructure and how to improve water quality. So one good example of a retrofit project is the 12th Street Bioswell. Some of you may have seen this on drive home or in town. This is just south of Oak Hill on 12th Street cutoff. This project involved modifying the existing sewer system so that stormwater would be rerouted through a bioswell adjacent to 12th Street before its discharge to Pringle Creek. This bioswell now provides treatment for approximately 16 acres of residential development prior to its discharge in Pringle Creek that didn't occur before. Projects like this will become more common as a result of the stormwater retrofit program or the retrofit study. And there's also a requirement within the permit itself to conduct at least one retrofit project within the five-year duration of the permit that targets bacteria removal. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Justin Boynton to provide some information about the monitoring program requirements.
Thank you, John. The components of the permit that have been discussed to this point are all designed to lessen the impacts of stormwater runoff on receiving water bodies. The permit does go a step beyond this requirement, and it also states that we need to perform environmental monitoring in order to quantify changes in stream health as well as understand the current conditions of stormwater discharges. Monitoring as identified in the permit can be separated into two categories of in-stream monitoring and stormwater monitoring. And under each of those categories, it can be further broken down into elements as it is listed out on the slide. For this permit term are the monitoring elements of mercury monitoring, pesticide monitoring, and macroinvertebrate monitoring, which includes the identification of aquatic insects, crayfish, snails, and worms within specified stream sections that are used to assess stream health. Some additional examples of parameters that we monitor for include conventional indicator parameters like pH, dissolved oxygen, and sediment. We monitor for nutrients like nitrogen and phosphorus, different metals like copper and zinc, E. coli bacteria, and many others. Examples of how these parameters end up in our stormwater runoff include the grinding of vehicle brake pads as a common source of copper, the wear of tire tread as a common source of zinc, fertilizer runoff as a common source of nitrogen and phosphorus and PET and wildlife droppings as a common source of E. coli bacteria. The map on this slide includes all of our monitoring locations for all of our different various elements that are all assembled out with different symbology. You can see that monitoring takes place across the city and virtually all of our major receiving streams have at least one type of monitoring performed on them. With all the different elements, locations, and parameters identified in the permit, the total number of data points that we'll be collecting is quite impressive. If you add up the numbers, first leaving out the continuous in-stream data that we collect, you're looking at almost 11,000 data points. When you add in the continuous in-stream data that we collect, the total is well over 10 million. So we're required to collect a large amount of data for compliance of the permit. And the DEQ is very prescriptive on a number of uses of this data. For example, the permit states that we must assess the chemical, biological, and physical effects of stormwater runoff on receiving streams. We do this through site configuration of our in-stream site monitoring locations, essentially in upstream and downstream configuration, upstream being the point at which the stream enters the city and downstream being the point at which the stream exits the city's jurisdiction or enters into a receiving water body. We must evaluate the long-term trends in receiving waters associated with MS-4 discharges, asking the question is the health of the stream improving or degrading? The longevity of our specific sites is critical for this. As well as we need to characterize stormwater runoff itself, meaning that we need to understand what are the current concentration levels of pollutants within that stormwater. This is done through representative monitoring of commercial, industrial, and residential land use, thus covering the three major land use types in Salem. And perhaps the most important use of the data is the role that it has in the adaptive management process. That is using the environmental data set so that we are able to make the best possible decision about the distribution of limited resources that will produce the biggest gain. And lastly, the data are also necessary for the completion of various permit-related reports listed as deliverables on the bottom of this slide. Reports that are ultimately used to show the progress and identify deficiencies in the way the city manages its stormwater runoff. At this point, Heather Dimke will discuss the annual reporting requirements.
Thank you. So at this point, John and Justin have both provided information about the background as well as some of the requirements associated with our MS-4 permit. Completion, I'm sorry. Now, to demonstrate, excuse me, to the DEQ as well as to the public that we are in compliance with these provisions, the city's required to draft and submit an annual report for each of the five years included in the permit term. Now, the intent of this report is to document all progress made on permit deliverables as well as on the activities currently presented in our stormwater management plan. It is through this process that the city demonstrates its efforts to reduce stormwater pollutants to the maximum extent practicable. Each annual report that is produced needs to address 11 separate elements as defined in the permit. These elements include, but of course are not limited to, a discussion of land use changes and development that has occurred within Salem's urban growth boundary, an overview of stormwater program financing and expenditures that have occurred within the last fiscal year as well as those anticipated into the next, a summary of all collected monitoring data, a list of enforcement actions related to illicit discharges, and any updates associated with the required public education effectiveness evaluation. In addition, the annual report also needs to address each and every best management practice that's in our stormwater plan. A defined set of measurable goals and tracking measures for these activities helps to facilitate this reporting element. Once completed, this annual report is to be submitted to the DEQ no later than November 1st of every year. However, under Salem's renewed permit, an open public comment period is now required prior to the submittal. While the duration of this public comment period is not specified in the permit, we are at this point anticipating 30 days every October for citizen input. And now I'd like to offer a closer look at the reporting process as well as some of the activities that we currently document. As I mentioned previously, a very large portion of the annual report is actually dedicated to tracking the activities in our stormwater management plan. There are present 66 different tasks that we are required to report on. The example that I've provided pertains to Salem's operations and maintenance activity. This particular activity encompasses 12 separate tasks. Task number one, as is provided on the reporting form, illustrates the city's street sweeping program. There are three separate measurable goals tied to this individual task. The one that I have presented on the board calls for a continuation of the current sweeping schedule. Through the reporting process, the city needs to confirm that this activity, as it is presented, is continuing to occur. Some other examples of best management practices that are currently in our 2010 stormwater plan include continuation of the city's watershed protection and preservation grant program, further development of watershed management plans, and continuation of the city's stream cleaning program. All of the information that is gleaned from these activities, from collected monitoring data, and all of the permit-required assessments should be used to adaptively manage the stormwater program. However, the renewed permit now stipulates any modification requires DEQ notification. Furthermore, any reduction to a best management practice activity first requires a written request and subsequent approval by the DEQ before that activity can occur. Every request that is submitted to the DEQ needs to explain why there is a need for the reduction as well as how that reduction will improve the stormwater program as a whole. For this reason, there are some serious budgetary constraints tied to the activities listed in our stormwater management plan. Before any decision is made to reduce or modify an activity, a fair amount of consideration and planning should be considered if we are to maintain compliance with the permit. With these stipulations in mind, the city is now required to develop and submit an adaptive management strategy by November 1st of this year. It is this document that the city will use to clarify the procedures we will use to manage the stormwater program and change best management practices. It is anticipated that this strategy will be submitted with the first annual report this fall. Finally, I'd like to iterate. It's been expressed before, but I'd like to state again, this truly is a citywide effort. Completion of each and every annual report as well as of all the deliverables presented in our permit requires coordination and communication across the board. Each and every one of the work groups that I presented in this table will contribute to this process in one way or another. For example, Water and Environmental Services will take the lead role in illicit discharge detection and elimination. Park staff will continue to refine and update the existing and required integrated pest management plan. And even staff from Fire and Safety will contribute by implementing a required program to reduce stormwater pollutants from all training activities. Finally, I'd like to point out that the citizens of Salem will continue to play an ever-increasing role in this process as well as outreach efforts are stepped up and opportunities for public comment and feedback are emphasized. In the end, it will be the efforts of all these parties that will allow the city to maintain compliance with its permit as well as achieve the desired pollutant reductions in our storm system and consequently within Salem's urban streams. And with that, I'd like to turn the final discussion back over to John.
Thank you, Heather. Having now provided you with an overview of the MS-4 permit and its requirements as well as given the economic conditions that we're in, it's a fair question to ask, how much will it cost? The numbers provided here in this table are the same ones that were provided to the council during review and subsequent approval of the stormwater utility proposal. These figures represent the cost of citywide implementation of the stormwater management program. As it illustrates, there are incremental increases over the next four years. Three years, excuse me. While these numbers were being put together, there was some consideration given to anticipated requirements of the MS-4 permit. However, the permit had not yet However, the permit had not yet been issued, so we weren't aware of all the requirements of the permit. This will require city staff to consider working within existing budgets, as well as those in proposed budget years, to identify both the ongoing projects or programs as part of the stormwater management program, as well as the one-time studies and efforts that need to be conducted, like the hydromodification study or the retrofit study. We'll need to work within our budgets to accomplish those goals and to maintain compliance with the MS4 permit. And with that, I'd like to thank you for your attention on behalf of myself, Justin, and Heather, and turn it back over to Francis.
Thank you, John. I want to thank Mayor Peterson and the council members again for having us here this evening. Included in your packet is a copy of the MS4 permit, and our presentation tonight was just an overview of the many requirements in that permit. It's a bit of a mind-boggling document, and sometimes it feels like it's in a foreign language. The difficulty will now be in the details of meeting the permit requirements, and as such, the challenge for staff in the city will be to demonstrate good stewardship of our urban watersheds and streams, the Willamette River, by successfully complying with all aspects of the permit in a fiscally responsible manner. We ask for your participation and support in this endeavor over the next five years. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you all very much for your fine work in preparing the report and for coming tonight to present this to us. I wonder if any of the councillors have questions? Yes, councillor Nanki, and then councillor, I'm not sure, was Dan Clem next, councillor Clem? Thank you, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to the new water quality standards that they're looking at right now based on fish consumption, significant increase. Do we know where we stand with the constituents that are on that list and if we will have to respond to that?
I think so. Councillor, we have some information, we've had to test for a lot of those water quality constituents, some through the Senate 737 program and others through our normal monitoring process. In terms of having to meet those, if we do, it will come out of the total maximum daily load program, which they'll have to set allocations in our discharge, both from our stormwater and wastewater programs. I think that's a little ways away, but there's no guaranteeing that we're not going to have to. Currently, they're looking at variances for the mercury program where they know we can't meet the numbers, their numbers are so incredibly small that we're going to be given a pass through the legislative process, we hope. And I hope that answers your question, but there's a lot of scary elements inorganic and organic chemicals out there that we know we can measure, we know we can't remove them.
And that's kind of my point, it's like, if you have to issue waivers to everybody because we can't remove them, what are you doing putting it in the first place because it's inefficient and it wastes time and money? Rather than just saying, we know this is here, don't add anymore, eventually the earth will wash itself free of the majority of that if we're not adding anymore. But with fluorescent light bulbs being disposed of rampantly around the neighborhoods, I see the mercury levels going up significantly in the years to come because people don't understand what the heck's in this light bulb that now they're just throwing.
These are really, a lot of these are societal issues. You know, people use pharmaceuticals, people drink coffee, and therefore, there's a tremendous amount of caffeine in our wastewater. All these are environmental issues, but they're very difficult, easy to measure, difficult to treat, so there's a real balancing act, and we just sort of brace ourselves for what the requirements are, because in the end, and the reason we present it to council is, you know, the policy issues are set by the legislature, by the Congress, at some point, it's just, it's really a financial issue. You know, we'll have to spend more money to do more treatment, and that's really where the issue ultimately lies.
And that is even based on incoming water quality? It could be bad before it even gets to the city of Salem, and we'll have to treat it before we can discharge it.
That's why we measure at all entry points to know what's really our responsibility. But right, in the end, we may have to treat for all of it. You're totally correct.
And councillor, I'll add to that. Francis brought up a good point with mercury. We do have a requirement to monitor for mercury within the MS4 permit, and mercury is also tied quite tightly to sediment. So, if we can implement practices such as an erosion control program or implement other practices such as treatment facilities that will remove that sediment, we're also attacking the mercury in that system.
Okay, councillor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Peter, maybe you can help me with this. I read that we have requirements to develop or change city ordinances and codes for low-impact development by January 1st, 2014, which I believe is consistent with federal law, but will we, will your section and all the city departments be implementing a new LID construction and post-construction type ordinances between now and
Yeah, we're working diligently on the code revisions. In fact, Robert Chandler's working on that, and we expect, when will they come to council? Later this year?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so they're kind, we've been working on those for quite a while, we knew this was coming. You know, there are impacts to that as well. We've been working closely with the Home Builders Association, with the development community, because sometimes it means more cost, sometimes they're simply concerns. You know, if you implement rain gardens, instead of moving the water out to the street, will they have flooded basements? They're terrified of, you know, flooded basements or mold claims, so how do you move water? How do you keep it in the grasp and move it away from the household to be able to treat it? So, there's a lot of those kinds of issues that the home builders have made us aware of, and we're trying to balance our code, our new code requirements to meet these standards with the concerns that the building industry has, so it's a very complicated, very fine tight rope that we're attempting to walk.
Well, and that's a great point to lead into my second and final question, Peter, and that is, I just glanced through and apologize for being late, but I want to try to get some sort of a sense that every year we publish this book, Quality of Water, I'm sure that's a requirement, state or federal or self-imposed.
Correct.
And now, it sounds like we're going to publish this stormwater or separate MS4-type annual report. Getting the public energized, as these folks have brought up, they all play a role, the citizens do, rather than publishing this report that many people may not want to commit to memory, can we use them, funds that would normally be identified with publishing a glossy report, and use those more on a proactive sense of educating folks about, don't put it down the drain? What are we doing for this public outreach to energize the
Well, the consumer confidence report that you speak of is required by state and federal law, so we have to publish that. In fact, we use that for all kinds of outreach related to not just water conservation and water usage and water quality, but also stormwater. In fact, in this year's edition that's being put together now, there'll be some discussion about stormwater. Beyond that, we've been doing outreach for a number of years on the stormwater side, specifically in schools, to community groups, et cetera, and they range everything from presentations to workshops to the little placards that you see on the, at the catch base, and so every little bit of that helps, kind of answered your question.
Yeah, do we want every household to have a rain garden where they can go pour their unused coffee? I mean, are we going to take on some very proactive, aggressive methods at the household level to reduce, at the source, the drain pipe, these things that have been brought up?
If I could briefly answer your question, in regards to the annual report process that you inquired about, that is indeed a requirement of the permit, so that is why, and that has been since inception of the permit. In addition to that, however, when we do present that to the public, we are offering to come to small groups, watershed councils, neighborhood associations and such, and do a presentation that would summarize the elements of these documents that are required. One of the requirements associated with the permit is indeed a targeted outreach campaign with two areas of focus. The first of those we are focusing on is actually stormwater runoff in general. There's a lot of people in this society and across the states that don't realize that stormwater goes directly to streams untreated, so that's the starting place for this outreach element, and again, we are offering presentations to those that are interested, so.
And then, on the rain garden side, our stormwater utility program, when fully implemented, part of that funding, we will look to providing, you know, small grants and opportunities to folks, no different than what we do on the water side, where we offer low-flow showerheads and toilet tummies and those kinds of things to conserve water. We will have the same partner program on the stormwater side to, you know, reduce stormwater discharge out to the public system.
Yeah, it just makes sense to me that this proactive, you know, instead of reactive, is going to save us money, because that, to me, could be just as, a whole lot more important than us building infrastructure and doing reports.
Absolutely.
Sure. Actually, councillor Claussen, and then councillor Bennett, and then councillor Nanki.
First, thanks for the presentation, it was very insightful, and I'm pretty green on all this stuff, but, no pun intended. The MS4 permit, I wasn't totally clear on that. Is that new with us changing to a separate stormwater system, or is that what is requiring this change to a separate stormwater system?
Go ahead, John.
Actually, the sewer system in Salem hasn't changed, it's always been a separate system, and this is just the third iteration of the permit, so that's what's changed. In the prescriptive nature of it, that's changed, but the permit itself isn't new in the sewer system itself, is it?
Okay, so it's not tied
Don't be nameless, cost.
I understand, it's not tied at all to creating the separate utility?
No. No. The utility is all about separating the funding from the wastewater bill to a separate stormwater bill, so that we can, because you can see that, you know, as the news tightens, the cost for stormwater, our prediction is that they will increase, perhaps at a faster clip than wastewater, perhaps at an equivalent clip, depending on, you know, whatever the requirements are, but we're definitely seeing a ramp up on the stormwater side.
Okay, thank you, that was what I was looking for. On the, on some of the other items, I'm seeing some of these things and dollar signs flash through my head, some of them being construction site runoff, you know, I don't believe we, I'm assuming that's going to be extra costs to our inspections and building, probably translated into building permit costs, and these are probably more comments that I'm thinking out loud. The post-construction site runoff, obviously, that's design and capture of a lot more material, which drives, potentially drives costs up. Hydromodification, the retrofit strategy, costs for that, is that included in the $10 to $11 million on the last page, the projected budgets?
Yeah, that requirement was known during the development of utility.
Okay, so that's included in there, there's an X dollar amount of that, okay?
Well, for the study, now, over time, as we, you know, do a better job in our creeks or rework, you know, the environment, then those are capital costs that will come. So, for example, Battle Creek, in your ward councillor, there's a requirement to rework Walt Creek as part of the development of the park and the school, so we're going to take it from basically a U-shaped ditch that straight away into a meandering, more natural stream, well, there's a million-dollar cost associated with that and its associated working of the land. That's part of this initial phase, and we'll be showing the public next week, so that part of this will come over time, and those costs will be borne ultimately by the citizens through the stormwater utility.
Right. I'm just thinking, though, if we didn't do any of those other projects, we've got some money set aside to fulfill the MS4 permit with some retrofit as necessary to fulfill the permit.
We're doing, you know, this is, the stormwater side of our practice, of our operations, has really been slow to ramp up, and it's been slow to ramp up because we've had other requirements, and the other requirements were the MAO requirements on the wastewater side and the modernization of the water system, so that costs a tremendous amount of money. As we've completed those projects and moving forward now with the ramp up of the requirements of the MS4 permit, now we're going to start to see the ramping up of stormwater, but, you know, this is really, we're not alone here. If you read the newspaper, you know, Land and Houston are two examples where, you know, they're facing, you know, billions of dollars in these kinds of things, so we're all in it together, and it's very substantial.
Okay, and lastly, this money comes out of what fund?
This is the Water and Sewer Fund, this is ratepayer money.
Okay.
So, Fund 310.
All right, thanks.
Okay, councillor Bennett.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, I had just a couple of questions. Just to underscore councillor Clem's comment, the public outreach in this is going to be enormous, and explaining this to people, we've been through this several times, I've seen this, an iteration of this, different ways, at different times, and still have some trouble grasping some aspects of it, okay? And so, I hope that as you develop, you will use this as a model, because this was really understandable, I thought was very good, and I wanted to tell you how much I appreciated receiving the PowerPoint in advance, that was really helpful, that is a good model to use, but developing that public outreach, so people understand why we would be separating these bills and how the money's going to be spent, I think is going to be just essential. What's our ability to have an impact in urbanized areas outside of the city limits? I noticed in the map, as we talk about watersheds, we're starting to talk about Marion County's jurisdiction, do we have any
Well, they're in the same boat as, they also have an MS4 permit, so, or an NPDS permit, so we're all in the same boat.
Are we coordinating that boat, or are we rowing different directions?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Just want to make sure we all got our r in the water. And so, you work with their public works department, and they're looking at the same figures, the same issues?
Yes.
Okay, because we're downstream from so much of what they do, okay?
Yeah, so the city of Stateon has the same requirements, the city of Turner has the same requirements, you know, Omsville has the same requirements, so that's not to say that, you know, we won't see some things that we have to deal with coming into the community, but over time, and because they were smaller communities, they actually had later implementation than we do, so they are, you know, slightly out of phase with us, but everybody's coming along at the same time, and at some point, everybody's required.
So, they can't send their problem downstream into Salem where we're ending up with a higher cost associated with, say, like you say, sedimentary mercury moving out?
Well, they shouldn't be, so.
Are we monitoring that?
We monitor, we know what comes into our system, yes.
In the monitoring program, will we be able to highlight information we develop at monitor stations, sort of good, bad, and ugly situations around the community where problems may exist?
Yeah, go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, we definitely will be able to do that. You know, we've been collecting data since 1996, and, you know, it's interesting with the environmental monitoring data, because it takes a long time to really start to build up that record, but we're getting to that point where we're really starting to have that record, and we've expanded our monitoring efforts in such a way that we're really collecting a good amount of data, and we're really starting to understand, you know, not only the different, you know, pollutant levels that we're seeing within the stormwater runoff itself, but also what's entering the city, and then also what's happening in different parts of the town, too. Seeing that geography has a lot to do with the different parameter levels that we're seeing as well. So, as we're starting to encompass all of that data and be able to put it together, then we'll really be able to focus on different parts of town and saying that, you know, geez, you know, sediment on this part of town is a real big issue, and not only is that an issue, but so many things are tied to sediment, like mercury, legacy pesticides, various things like that.
So, if the newspaper reporter wanted to call you tomorrow and say, where's it going well, or what are you seeing in various parts of town, you could produce a profile of the community or parts of the community?
The last major synthesis of the data that we did was about two and a half years ago, and so that would be the report that we would refer to.
Okay, and then finally, this has, from what I saw, because you listed all of the different departments involved, this has pretty substantial budget implications across the enterprise, the city enterprise. the, the enterprise, the city enterprise. Will we get a presentation or a forecast on this during the Public Works budget portion of the hearings this year? Will we begin to see this coming through so we can begin to gauge its impact during the budget cycle?
You know, the vast majority, even though there were a lot of names on that table, virtually all of them are Public Works. So, so it's, it's really embedded in our budget, mostly in operations in, in, in the stormwater area. Now, there are other parks, there's some reporting that the Fire Department has to do, there's some things that, that some other departments have to do. It's not, at least for this year, you can, you can correct me, it's not a lot that has to be done, so it's not a major budget implication this year. There are a lot of things that are already in play. But, yeah, over time, there will be some things that have to be done. And, yeah, we'll either have to show them, either call them out on the budget, or, or provide the council with, with some reporting of where that's coming from. Francis, do you want to add?
Yeah, Counselor, what we're attempting to do is have the various city departments work with us to establish programs rather than expenditures in order to fulfill these deeds. The, the good example that Heather pointed out was the Fire Department, asking them to limit the amount of their runoff from exercises, like, say, foaming exercises at the airport. We can capture that, put it in the sanitary sewer, it gets treated and doesn't impact the receiving water bodies. Hopefully, most of what we do is working with our other city departments, recycling, limiting the types of chemicals they use, that sort of program.
Okay. I, I guess I was looking at legal and things like that. I, I didn't know if it'd be a cost allocation. I guess the reason I'm asking is, as we begin to separate this enterprise, separate from other parts of the, of the city, its budget would seem to be something that we would want to have pretty transparent, because we're going to be asking ratepayers to fund it. So, as, as you develop it, and it ha, its full ramifications, I think, will be really helpful to see. I assume that's how it's arranged.
Yes. Counselor, to the extent that the costs in other departments are a choice about workload that's already in the existing budget, we wouldn't call it out separately. But, as we go, if we find that other departments need to add some expenses, excuse me, or buy some equipment, we could make sure that we have a project cost for that related to this.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions from counselors? Yes, Brett, Counselor Nanki, I'm sorry, you did have your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick one in regards to the post-construction site runoff slide, number 10, where we were discussing urbanized versus unurbanized watershed response from a rain event. And when we added the detention in, we're not down to that level, and I'm assuming that's because of single-family residential driveways and city streets that have no detention, whereas naturally you have sheet flow turbulence and then ground absorption parameter.
Right.
Do we have any plans way down the road to try to do something about older streets and systems as we have to replace them at the end of their life?
Yeah.
To then slow that down?
Yeah, we don't have a, and there isn't a specific plan, a street-by-street plan, but, but we have an example. On Court Street, we've had a historic flooding issue, Court Street between 15th and 17th Street, and our plan there is to create a rain garden, move the curbs out, create a rain garden. So, so there's an example where we're, we're retrofitting an existing problem, and instead of building a bigger pipe, what we're going to do is create a swale and, you know, a bigger opportunity for water to be treated and, and stored before it's, before it's discharged. The 12th Street example is another example where we did a retrofit. So, over time, those are the kinds of projects that, that you're going to see to retrofit. Now, we're never going to retrofit every street in town.
We can't.
But, but you can see what, what we're doing out at Mill Creek Corporate Center. All the streets will be open swale. What we've done out at Gaffin Road is all open swale. So, so we're definitely headed in, in that direction for, for new development. And then, when we have to do existing retrofits, as we have the capacity to do it, and as it's proper, then we will do those kinds of things, because that's, it's the only way that we can capture it.
Can I just follow up with one last quick one? I know we're pushing time big enough.
Okay.
There was discussion when we were starting to play with bio swales, that they're capturing, and they're capturing, and they're capturing, and then they just stop working and they release. Do we have any confirmation of whether or not that actually, in fact, happens? Or you could shoot something out after the fact. I'm just worried that, you know, we get all this mercury or whatever locked up in sediment, and then all of a sudden, it just comes back and gives back, you know, with a vengeance.
That's an interesting question, and it is discussed at the academic level of, of these types of facilities. And I don't think that that's necessarily been answered specifically yet. There's various studies that have looked at it, and in fact, we've had some Lamont students look at the 12th Street bio swell to look at metal accumulation in that soil. But whether or not there's a release of that, the evidence at this point suggests that the plants uptake it, and that there's microbes in the soils that help break that down. But, there is also the assumption that there is a maintenance responsibility with these, and that it's not unrealistic to expect that 10, 20, perhaps even more years down the road, that some of those soils will have to be recouped and replaced. So, so I think, I think the jury's still out on that, that issue.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Counselor Bennett, did you have a question?
No, I just, it's really interesting.
We're pleased that this is interesting. That's great. Okay, if there are no further questions for staff, I will close the work session.
Thank you so much.
We'll take a really quick break. I know a lot of you are here for the council meeting. We'll get started as quickly as we give people a chance to kind of move around the room and get settled again.
And the government's paying for all the ready.
With another city to the south of us, which a name escapes me, Eugene. Okay. Anyway, congratulations to the City of Salem on being recognized as a Tree City USA for the city's tree-related activities in, in the year 2010. It's, this is an accomplishment that only 54 other communities in Oregon and about 3,500 communities across the nation share this year, this past year. The Tree City USA Award is, is an important symbol that recognizes a city's commitment to appreciation and tree, to tree appreciation and tree care. I think it's a good sign that the community cares about its livability and recognizes the important contributions that trees make to the quality of life in our cities. I want to mention that the Oregon Department of Forestry, with whom OCT, Oregon Community Trees, works on behalf of Tree City USA, has a new state forester. He is Doug Deckard. And Doug seems to be very familiar with and supportive of urban forestry efforts by Oregon cities. And I also want to mention that this year is ODF's Oregon Department of Forestry's 100th birthday. Tree City, Tree City USA Award Program is sponsored by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and it's administered by the Oregon Department of Forestry. The main purpose of the program is to recognize cities that have developed programs to plant and care for trees in their communities. Successful tree cities have met four criteria set forth by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Number one was adopt and maintain a tree care ordinance. Two was establish and maintain a program, a tree board or a tree commission. Three was spend at least $2 per capita on a community tree care program, on community tree care. And four, conduct an Arbor Day or Arbor Week ceremony. Arbor Day is a nationally celebrated observance that encourages tree planting and tree care. It was founded by Jay Sterling Morton in Nebraska in 1872. National Arbor Day is celebrated each year on the last Friday in April. Oregonians celebrate Arbor Week, the first full calendar week in April. Arbor Day is celebrated in every US state and in many other countries as well. Oregonians celebrate Arbor Week, the first full calendar week in April. Arbor Day is celebrated in every US state and many other countries, as I said, as well. And finally, I want to acknowledge the excellent effort of the Salem Shade Tree Committee, of which Laura Lesher is, is a, is a very, is a member, and Wendy Pfeifer is, is a member. And, and I want to say, by the way, that, that Laura is also a, a board member on Oregon Community Trees. Laura, I understand that you'll be accepting the, this year's banner on behalf of the city. Is that true? Okay. Well, let's get to the presentation. Let me put this down for a moment, and I can get the materials out. First, the banner. There we go.
Yeah.
It's holding up there, yeah.
Very nice.
This is Tree, Tree City USA, Arbor Day Foundation. We have a, for, for Jan, to work with the crews to attach to our welcome signs to the city, we have a couple of stickers that are decals that attach to city, welcome to your city signs, that commemorate 35 years as the, as a tree city. And also, excuse me, for, for the mayor, we have a Tree City USA hat.
Well, all right.
You must, must wear the hat proudly.
Well, I would wear it proudly. Well, see, you can hold the microphone.
Also, to attach to the banner, a, the 2000, a little placard commemorating the 2010 Tree City.
Wonderful. Okay.
And one last, to commemorate the, this, this event, also, the mayor, I would like you to receive a Tree City USA.
Oh, thank you. Well, as you can see, I, I do wear my button.
Well, good. This will balance things out.
This will, it certainly will. All right. Well, thank you very much. I'll, I'll put this on.
I'm very, very pleased to have been able to take part in this. And anyway, congratulations to the City of Salem and to the Shade Tree Committee, and to Jan for the fine work that we're all doing on the heaping Salem livable community.
Okay. Thank you very much. I do have a proclamation to read, and I'll read that now. Whereas, the first full week of April is designated as Arbor Week by the Oregon Devise Statutes, as a time to encourage the planting, protection, and preservation of trees, and whereas the Arbor Week activities also encourage a greater understanding of the environment and means for preserving and improving it, and whereas the City of Salem has strongly supported the planting and care of trees within its parks and along its streets, and whereas for the 35th consecutive year, the National Arbor Day Foundation has designated the City of Salem as a Tree City USA for its participation in urban forestry by meeting the requirements of having a legally constituted tree commission, a comprehensive urban forestry program supported by a minimum dollar per capita of public funds, and conducting formal Arbor Week activities. Whereas Salem is one of only 17 cities in the country to have been a charter participant in the Tree City USA program in 1976 and recertified every year since, and the first city in Oregon to receive a Tree City USA 35-year award. Now, therefore, I Anna M. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim the week of April 3rd through the 9th, 2011, as Arbor Week, and urge all citizens of Salem to participate in community, school, and private observances of Arbor Week, and direct that the Tree City USA flag be flown at the Salem Civic Center during this week, dated today, the 28th day of March, 2001. So, congratulations to all of you, and I really do appreciate all of your work to ensure not only the beauty, but also the health of our community. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I guess I might as well keep this in my hand, because we're actually going to have some more proclamations here. Just a moment. Okay. Do I got it? I think, you know, hey, it's, maybe it's better than doing my hair. Okay.
It is.
Oh, thanks, Laura. Okay. Our next agenda item is the Caligoi Sister City presentation, and Arthur Berman is present, I believe. There he is. And you are president of the Salem Caligoi Sister Cities, and you're here to give the presentation.
I'm happy to be here. I do want to report from Caligoi that they were shaken badly, and there was some damage, but the biggest catastrophic damage was in northeast of Tokyo, as you're probably aware, in the Senda area and so forth. So, other than having blackouts from time to time, kind of a roving blackout, and some supply issues and some transportation issues, they're much better off than what their neighbors to the, to the northeast of Tokyo is having. As a consequence of this, the Sister City Group has been collecting donations, and we are going to give them to Caligoi to use as they see fit. And, or if that is not the case, we will then give it to Mercy Corps or some organization like that. So, in our, we're collecting that in the next week or so. So, thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Berman. We really appreciate that. Our hearts have gone out to families of, and loved ones of those in Japan who have been certainly impacted by this triple, triple whammy that they received, and our, our emails back and forth with those that we know and have been working with in Japan have been encouraging, but it's, they've got a long way to go. So, we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Art, if folks want to send donations, where do they send them to? How do they, how do they participate in this?
They can send it to our mailbox, PO Box 2147, Salem, Oregon, 97308. Or, if they're coming to our banquet in, on next Tuesday, a week from Tuesday, they can bring them there, too, as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and I think what we'll try to do is get that address, I don't know if we can put it on the website or get it somehow publicly displayed, so people, at least they can call the city manager's office and get that information. Okay.
Or if you just send it to the city manager, I'm sure that, that office will get it to me, too, as well.
That would work perfectly, too. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Our, our next presentation has to do with the Asphalt Pavement Association of Oregon, and I believe that we have several people here. Danny Lundie from North Saniam Paving, are you here? Okay. Why don't you all come down this way? City of Salem Public Works Project Manager and Steve Atherton, City of Salem Public Works Inspector, will be attending. Let's see, Brian Vincent, are you here also? Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to come over here. I'm going to grab the microphone again. I'm sorry. All right. Here we are, and we've got some photos, so I'll get out of the way, if I can, of the photos. Oh, well, here I am. Okay, so the 2010 street resurfacing project for commercial and church streets downtown was recognized by the Asphalt Pavement Association of Oregon earlier this month for excellence in paving in a complex environment, and awarded first place in the urban street category among four finalists from across the state at the association's 41st annual banquet. Now, there are quite a few cities, obviously, that are paving all the time, but I think it's significant that, that we received this award. And I'd like to take a moment to provide recognition to North Saniam Paving Company, Brian Vincent, Project Manager... Brian Vincent, Project Manager for the city of Salem, Steve Atherton, Inspector from the city of Salem Public Works, Sherry Walgren and Mike Goderba for their support. I think I saw Sherry here earlier, maybe. Okay. And the Chariots for their help in coordinating public transportation as this project was underway. And then for all the franchise utilities for their efforts in relocating the existing utilities. So, congratulations. I believe maybe one of you wants to say something? Someone wants to say where you are?
I'll go ahead and say something. This award really goes to North Saniam Paving. I want to make sure that they get recognized for this because they did an extremely good job for us downtown. And matter of fact, we have a bid opening tomorrow where we're hoping that they'll not only bid on it, but maybe have a really good chance of getting the next downtown project.
This is yours? Who do I give this to? Give this to you? Congratulations on the award. Okay. by outside agencies. And John Obrans, the Director of the Hallie Ford Museum of Art is here this evening. He'll be speaking on behalf of the museum. John, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address or your ward where you reside? And welcome. We're very pleased to have you with us this evening.
Thank you, Anna. I'm John Obrans. I live at 1397 Catholic Court.
Speak right into the...
Right here? Good. I'm John Obrans. I live at 1397 Catholic Court Northwest in beautiful West Salem. Good evening. My name is John Obrans. I'm Director of the Hallie Ford Museum of Art at Willamette University. I'm going to spend the next five minutes telling you a little bit about the history of the Hallie Ford Museum of Art, what I see as our significant accomplishments over the past decade, and what I see as a few of our challenges or opportunities for the future. The Hallie Ford Museum of Art opened its doors for the first time in October of 1998, although the history of art at Willamette really goes back 175 years to the very beginning of the university. Among the first objects to formally enter Willamette's art collection were Native American baskets given to the early Methodist missionaries by Calipuean Indians living in the Willamette Valley and Clapsup Indians living on the Oregon coast. Over the following 175 years, other objects trickled into the collection, including Native American baskets, European art, a few pieces of Asian art, and contemporary regional art, the gifts of alumni, friends of Willamette, and residents of Salem. In 1990, Mark Sponenberg, a professor of art history at Oregon State University, donated his study collection of European, Asian, and American art to Willamette. Mark was a sculptor, an art historian, an Egyptologist, a world traveler who felt his collection would be appreciated and used as a teaching tool by Willamette faculty, just as he had used it throughout his very long and distinguished career. With Sponenberg's significant and transformational gift, the university began to think about establishing a museum of art on campus to house their growing art collection, but they didn't have the 10 to 15 million that it would have taken to build a new museum of art in the early 1990s. Well, in 1996, our building, the old Pack Bell Building in downtown Salem, became available for a million dollars. The Board of Trustees didn't have a million dollars in their back pocket at the time, but they approached longtime benefactor Hallie Ford, and through her foundation, the Ford Family Foundation in Roseburg, Oregon, Hallie provided a $2 million gift, a million dollars to purchase the building and a million dollars to begin the interior improvements. A number of other key donors provided gifts over the next two years. We hired the architectural firm of Soderstrom Architects to transform our building from a 1960s office building into a state-of-the-art museum of art. I was hired as the founding director, and we officially opened our doors in October of 1998. Since we opened our doors for the first time in the fall of 1998, the Hallie Ford Museum of Art has grown by leaps and bounds and has achieved a number of significant goals or milestones. Our staff has grown from one full-time employee, myself, in 1998 to a full and part-time staff of 10 professionals in 2010. We built a $5 million endowment fund over the past 12 years, including several endowed positions and several endowed exhibition funds, and have generated significant grant support in recent years from corporate, foundation, government, and private sources. We've added significant works of art to our permanent collection through donation or purchase, increasing its size from approximately 4,500 objects when we opened in 1998 to over 6,000 objects in 2010. These include superb examples of Egyptian art, Greek pottery, Roman glass, Christian art, 19th century American art, Native American baskets, Chinese ceramics and scrolls, Japanese sculpture and prints, African and Oceanic art, hundreds of examples of historic and contemporary regional art. Over the past 10 years, we've mounted a dazzling array of temporary exhibitions ranging from exhibitions of Egyptian art from American collections and ceremonial regalia of native Oregon to mid-career and retrospective exhibitions for some of the foremost artists of our region, including Faye Jones, George Johansson, James Lavador, and Alfredo Adagino, among others. We published 16 books and exhibition catalogs and eight exhibition brochures to accompany our temporary exhibitions, really an unprecedented accomplishment for a museum of art our size. Similarly, we've traveled 10 of our temporary exhibitions on a local, regional, and national, and even international level to venues in Washington, Oregon, California, Montana, Utah, Colorado, Kansas, Indiana, Florida, Canada, and even New Zealand, paying national and even international attention and recognition to the Hallie Ford Museum of Art, Willamette University, and the city of Salem. Over the past 12 years, we presented a wide range of lectures, films, gallery talks, and performances intended to instruct and delight. Speakers have ranged from Egyptologist Kent Weeks, who discussed his groundbreaking work in the Valley of the Kings in the fall of 2002, to author Robert Edsel, who lectured on the Nazi looting of Europe's art treasures during World War II just this past fall. Moreover, attendance has grown steadily over the past decade, from approximately 10,000 visitors when we first opened our doors in 1998 to between 24 and 30,000 visitors per year over the past few years. In addition to our programmatic accomplishments, we've made a number of significant improvements to our physical plant. In 2007, 2008, with the support of a million-dollar gift from Mary Beth Collins, we completed a major renovation of our basement, transforming it into a state-of-the-art support space for collections and exhibitions. In 2008, we commissioned the late Ellensburg, Washington artist Dick Elliott to create reflector panels for the 45 windows on the second floor of our building, adding color and excitement to the facades of our structure. In 2009, we re-landscape the exterior of our building, and in 2010, we added induction lighting to the exterior of the building, raising its visibility at night and improving security. Over the past three years, we redesigned, reinstalled, and reinterpreted our permanent galleries, adding new walls and display cases, new and improved lighting, new paint colors, and new storyline for each gallery. In 2009, for example, we reopened the Mark and Janice Sponenberg Gallery, which houses our collection of European, Asian, and American art. In 2010, we reopened the Carl Hall Gallery, which houses our collection of regional art. And in May of this coming year, we reopen the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Gallery, which houses our collection of historic and contemporary Native American art. While we can look back with a great deal of pride and satisfaction at what we've been able to accomplish in the short span of 12 years, there are still many goals that we hope to achieve over the next decade. We hope to increase our endowment fund from $5 million to $7.5 million over the next 10 years. We'd like to add an endowment fund to support art acquisitions, and I'd like to endow our collection curator positions with an endowment gift of $1 million. In addition, we want to continue to expand our base of corporate, foundation, government, and private support in the years ahead. We intend to upgrade the overall design and layout of our bookstore, and with the help of the Willamette University bookstore staff, improve the overall merchandise mix in order to maximize its profitability and sales potential. This summer, we're planning to add a brand-new position, a position of Membership Public Relations Manager, to the staff to work on membership development and promote and market the Hallie Ford Museum of Art on a local, regional, and national level. For example, we currently have approximately 375 members, but in a city the size of Salem with a population base of 150,000, we should easily be able to capture between 1% and 2% of our population base, or roughly 1,500 to 3,000 members. Membership development is not rocket science, but we need a person who can devote at least part of their time to membership cultivation and development. Similarly, the quality of our and diversity of our collections and exhibitions, given the quality and diversity of our collections and exhibitions, we ought to be able to attract more than 24,000 to 30,000 visitors per year. And with a permanent staff person working at least part-time to promote and market our collections and exhibitions, I'm confident we'll see an increase in attendance over the next few years. Over the next decade, we'll continue to acquire key examples of art for the permanent collection, fulfilling Mark Sponenberg's original gift of using that collection as a teaching tool to support the liberal arts curriculum of the university. Moreover, we intend to continue to mount major exhibitions of historic art, of regional art, Native American art, and we plan to continue to present a lively range of exhibition lectures, films, concerts, and so on and so forth. Two major exhibitions that I want to mention in particular are Italian drawings from the Alessandro Maggiore Collection, which we're going to be presenting in the fall of 2011. This is a rare collection that's never been seen before outside of Italy. These are Renaissance drawings of the 15th, 16th, 17th century, and an exhibition on the art of the ancient Near East from American collections, which I'm organizing and which we'll present in the fall of 2012. Both of these are major exhibitions and are really destined to attract visitors from up and down the West Coast. Finally, over the next 10 years, we hope to seek accreditation from the American Association of Museums. AAM accreditation is like the good housekeeping seal of approval and signifies excellence, professionalism, and accountability within the museum profession. I'm very excited about what we've been able to accomplish over the past 10 years, actually 12 years, and look forward to the next 10 years with equal excitement and enthusiasm. I think with a dynamic and growing permanent collection, with a dazzling array of temporary exhibitions planned in the years ahead, with education programs intended to instruct, educate, inspire, and delight, I feel confident the Hallie Ford Museum of Art can look forward to a very bright future of service, not only to Willamette University, but to the citizens of Salem, the people of Oregon, and beyond. Thank you very much for your attention and time, and thank you for your ongoing support of the arts and culture in Salem. Remember, "Arz longa vite breva," which means "life is short, but the arts are forever." Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Obrans. And before you leave the podium, I'd like to say, on behalf of the city, thank you so much to you and to the Hallie Ford Museum of Art staff. You've been tremendously supportive of the city of Salem and our Public Arts Commission endeavor. You were one of those people that we brought into the circle to read drafts of those papers, and you've always worked tirelessly on the annual Mayor's Art Invitational. As a judge, we appreciate that so much, and we appreciate the role that the Hallie Ford Museum plays in our community, both for children and for adults. Are there questions from any of the councilors' comments? Counselor Tesler?
Thank you for coming down tonight. And I have a comment and a question for you. The first comment is, on Thursday night, instead of driving to Portland to hear something esoteric and cool, I'm going to come down at 7:30 and listen to the lecture on Coptic art and early Christian drawings, which I'm very excited about because usually you'd have to drive to Portland to see that. So, I'm a total geek, so, you know. So, I thank you for bringing that here because that's just an example of something that you normally would not get here. But I will tell you this, is that I do talk to a lot of people, and you're sort of a buried treasure. And I would like for more people to know about you because there's a lot of people in Salem that are long-term people, and they have no idea what's in that building, and they have no idea what goes in and out of there. And I've taken people in there, and they have been amazed at your collection. I mean, you have beautiful, beautiful Native American basketry. Mary Knoll is comparable. And I'd like to see you somehow figure out how to raise your profile, maybe attract some different genres of people, try something new, have a midnight party, I don't know. But just kind of try and get that outreach out of the Willamette community and into our community because I think that people would benefit from that. I mean, it really is a special place inside there, and I'd really like to see some more people enjoy that. Okay, go ahead.
I was going to say, in addition to Marilyn Helman's lecture on Thursday, the following Wednesday, Jonathan King, who's Keeper of Anthropology at the British Museum, happens to be in Oregon visiting the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron, is actually going to be giving a lecture on campus Wednesday, April 6, at 7:30. But in answer to your question, yeah, that's one of the reasons we're hiring a Membership Public Relations Coordinator or Manager to really get the word out. Because we do have, I mean, we have had amazing exhibitions. When you think about Greek and Roman art from the Museum of Fine Arts in Boston in 2000, Egyptian art from American collections in 2002, Toy Maori, The Eternal Thread, Maori Weaving in 2005, this Italian drawing exhibition that we're doing in 2011 is the first time these drawings have ever been... These drawings were... You're going to get excited. These drawings were hidden away. They were hidden from the Nazis during World War II, and then they were forgotten, only to be rediscovered about 10 years. We're going to be showing this collection of 75 drawings that was presumed lost up until about 10 years ago. These are works by some of the great masters of the Italian Renaissance. This is the only place in the United States where these drawings are going to be shown. So, one of the reasons we're hiring this Public Relations Membership Manager is to be able to really get the word out. And so, I'm open to all kinds of possibilities, you know, in terms of just getting the community in for, you know, Friday night at the Hallie for jazz and wine, and, you know. I'm open to all those kinds of possibilities. So, we really want to transform it and make it more of a real social and cultural center for the community.
Great. And I think those are excellent ideas, you know, and that's what I'm trying to pitch to you is, you know, let's get, I mean, rent a billboard or do something like that. Just get people in there because a lot of people don't know about you, and we should, you know, advertise that to the community because usually you have to drive to Portland to see all those things. And my last question for you, I was just curious, you know, Willamette, you are a part of Willamette University, is that correct?
We are.
The university does not support you completely financially?
They, well, it's a long question. They do provide a foundation, but we've also been very proactive over the last 12 years in building an endowment fund, which we've done really in tandem with Willamette University. We've worked together to build our endowment fund so that we don't rely exclusively, you know, on the rise and fall of student or freshman enrollment. My goal from the get-go has really been to try to make the Hallie Ford Museum, while we're a part of Willamette University, my goal has been to try to make us as self-sufficient as possible so that our revenue comes from endowment, certainly a certain portion of it, but, you know, will always come from Willamette University because we're part of Willamette University. But to look at diversifying our revenue streams so we're not only generating revenue to support our operations through Willamette, but endowment through grants and contributions, through admission fees, and we hope through membership, through increased membership.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming down. I really appreciated your description.
My pleasure. I'll see you Thursday night.
Yes. That's great. And we'll say one quick thing. You're free on Tuesday? Admission is free on Tuesday? Is that right? And otherwise, it's $3?
It's $3 for adults, $2 for students and seniors. Members are free. And we just started a new program for $100-level members and above. For a $100 member of the Hallie Ford Museum of Art, you will... We now have a reciprocal arrangement with 200 museums around the country. So, if you just present your membership card at one of 200 museums around the country, they'll get you in for free, and you'll also get the same discounts in the museum store that you would at the Hallie Ford Museum. This is a brand-new promotion.
Excellent. That's great. Well, thank you again for coming down. We really appreciate the information, and we'll see you often.
Thank you so much, Madam Peterson.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to move quickly to our public hearings. It is just about 7:00. It is just about 7:30, and I don't want to run past that time, so excuse me for taking things out of order a bit here. We do have a person who has signed up to speak on item 8, or are we? 8B. We have no one signed up for 8A on the public hearings.
Motion.
Oh, I need a motion for that one?
Yes, to continue.
So, I need a motion to convene the public hearing.
Summer.
To continue.
Is there a second?
Second.
To continue the public hearing.
Oh, to continue a public hearing.
I don't want to.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilor Tesler and seconded by Councilor Clem. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we'll start with 8B. Who do we have signed up? Thank you. Mark Grentz. Is Mark Grentz here? I hope I'm saying, pronouncing your name correctly. Grentz. Yes? Would you approach the podium, please, and state your name and your address or your ward number? I'm sorry, yes, Councilor Nanki?
Do we need to stand record first, or...
Well, this has already been opened, and so this is a stipulated remand between the parties, and I'm assuming Mr. Grentz simply wants to say that he supports the stipulated remand.
Do I need to say anything now? Probably just for the record, so.
Okay.
My name is Mark Grentz, and I'm with Multitec Engineering. Our office is at 1155 13th Street.
Can you speak up into the microphone, please? Thanks.
Our office is at 1155 13th Street Southeast here in Salem. We're representing the applicants in this, and yes, Mr. Tosh is correct. We're here just to make sure that you know that the applicants are in support of staff's recommendation for the remand on this matter. We've been working with staff, and we think this is the best way to resolve the issues that we have with the decision that was issued, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Are there any questions of council? All right, hearing none. The...
You can actually close this.
Then we'll actually close this hearing. Now we'll move back to the consent calendar.
We need a motion.
Oh, do we need a motion?
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry. We need a motion. Councilor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Nanki to accept the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, now, Councilor Bennett, we'll go back to the consent calendar. Would you make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, would you like to complete the boards and commissions? Did you want to do that, or do you want me to go ahead with the consent?
I am so sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
Yes, we should go back to that. I apologize. We do have a second presentation with regards to boards and commissions, and Angie Morris is here from Travel Salem. Angie, will you please come to the podium, state your name and address or your ward? We appreciate you coming down again tonight.
Hi, my name is Angie Morris, President and CEO of Travel Salem. And Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me here this evening. I wanted to take time this evening to come back and officially correct the record. The last time I was here, we discussed Travel Salem's 1114 strategic plan, and I'd like to take this opportunity to provide more clarity to the answers I shared with you when I was last here. I will be addressing three specific areas: staffing projections, salary treatment, and Travel Salem's governance model. Regarding the first item, Travel Salem's staffing projections for both the 1114 strategic plan and the draft 1112 business plan, I'd like to clarify and expand on the questions asked previously by Mayor Peterson. Mayor, your questions can best be answered by providing a bit of context from this current fiscal year. In 2010-11, Travel Salem went from 7 1/2 FTE to 10 FTE by filling three strategic positions. We refilled our full-time public relations manager position, which is paid by both TOT dollars and private sources. We hired a part-time program assistant, which is paid 100% from private sources. And we recently refilled our full-time community development manager position, which is a sales position, which is paid 100% from private sources. So, these hires have been made in this current fiscal year. While specific staffing plans aren't listed in the 1114 three-year strategic plan, some detail was outlined for you in the draft 1112 business plan. The 1112 business plan that you received listed that a salesperson would be hired. However, that hire has already been made in this current fiscal year, 1011, as I just shared with you, so we will not be hiring that position in 1112. In summary, we do not intend to hire any additional staff in the future, and the 1114 strategic plan can be executed with the existing staff currently in place. The second area I'd like to clarify with you this evening is regarding salary treatment for Travel Salem staff. Increases in the salary and related expenses line item of our budget are due entirely to increases in health benefit costs and additional FTEs. I should note that in 1011, this current fiscal year, we experienced a 28% increase in health benefit costs. No cost-of-living adjustments have been given, and no TOT dollars have been used for any merit-based bonuses for meeting and exceeding organizational standards and goals. Travel Salem took a very creative approach to our staffing model this fiscal year by strategically realigning workloads and adjusting the scope of positions to best meet the needs of our programs and services. In addition, in recognition of these difficult economic times, innovative staffing models and partnerships are helping to hold staff costs flat while still delivering the results that are expected. We have not filled our administrative support position, which has meant, which has meant that these duties have been absorbed by other staff. This is the new norm, and staff are doing the work of two and sometimes three people, but that is what is needed to get us through these challenging times. In summary, Travel Salem is not adding any future positions. We're holding salaries flat, while at the same time balancing our ability to retain qualified staff and stay competitive. The final and last area we'd like to provide clarity on is regarding Travel Salem's governance model. Mayor Peterson asked questions regarding our board structure and term limits. I would like to reiterate that our bylaws state board members serve three-year terms with a limit of up to three consecutive terms. Our bylaws also state that no officer can serve more than two consecutive terms in the same office. However, in February 2010, the bylaws were amended to allow officers to serve an additional one-year term. Our current chair, Dwayne Brenneman, is completing his third year as chair on June 30th this year. Travel Salem's nominating committee will be making recommendations to the board at our June meeting for both new directors as well as new slate of officers for 1112. I sincerely apologize for any confusion on my part in the answers I provided the last time I was here, and I want to assure you that Travel Salem is committed to transparency and accountability. I appreciate your time this evening and would be happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that so much. Counselors, are there questions for Ms. Morris? Hearing none? We thank you for coming down. I very, very much appreciate this. Thank you. All right. Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam.
Do you like to address the consent calendar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar with the following polls. I'd like to poll, Councilor Dickey would like to poll item 4.3D, and Councilor Bennett, poll 4.3F. That's the legislative agenda and the Olinger Pool issues.
Is there a motion? Are you making the motion to accept the consent calendar with those?
Yes, to move the calendar with those polls.
With those polls. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Nanki to accept the, to pass the motion for acceptance of the consent calendar, with the exception of the two items that have been polled. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilor Nanki?
Yeah, I just want to make sure there wasn't any public comment on any of the items on the consent calendar.
I don't believe there is.
I just...
You're right. I failed to say that. I'm sorry.
I will say aye.
Thank you. Oh, and that was your aye, all right.
That was my aye.
Any, anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move to special session, to special section, special business, to discuss those items that have been polled. Councilor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation for 4.3D.
Second. Okay. It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Tesler to accept the staff position, the staff report for the legislative report, item 4ED. Councilor Clem?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to register a no vote on House Bill 2997, which is the five regional land use planning commissions. The city, the staff recommendation is to oppose the legislation, and I oppose the opposition. So, I just want to register a no vote on that one vote.
All right. Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to be real clear. This is the legislative committee recommendation and not the staff. I, I, so, I presented, I think, the motion wrong. It really is the legislative committee's recommendation.
Right, okay.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
And we should get the, make sure that we got the number correct. It was D, not E.
D.
For the, for the record.
Yes.
D, right. Councilor Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions, I guess, and as I've talked with people this afternoon, I think there might be some confusion. I think I'm confused about the recommendation for House Joint Resolution 5, Senate Joint Resolution 13, and Senate Joint Resolution 17 regarding using the gas tax for something other than, like, streets and highways and that kind of thing. And is there a staff person who could kind of give a little clarity on specifically what those resolutions are asking for?
Yeah, Mark Beck will be able to help us there.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Mark Beck, Parks and Transportation Services Manager. The three joint resolutions are actually similar in nature. The two Senate resolutions are actually exactly the same, and then the House resolution is different, but the, all three of them would open up the Oregon Constitution to be, let me, let me start again. It would refer to the voters for the November election, the ability, if passed, to open up the state highway fund for other uses other than the traditional uses, which have been limited to the work to maintain, operate, plan, and design our roads and highways. The two Senate resolutions would open up the highway fund to, for use, for public transportation purposes, for transit, and then the House joint resolution would give to the voters then the ability to open up the state highway fund for a multitude of uses if they reduced or prevented congestion or pollution. And in the bill, it lists a number of different modes of travel that could benefit from that: aviation, rail, transit, bicycle, pedestrian, and other, other forms of travel and other projects that might reduce pollution. What staff would, would say is that this is indeed, these are all very worthy modes of travel and all very worthy purposes to be funded. However, staff's concern and recommendation to the council legislative committee is that once those, that fund is opened up for use by the other, these other uses, there would be less money available for highway and road maintenance. Every one of these different modes of travel currently have funding sources available to them, and one might question whether enough money goes to those modes of travel, but we certainly, here at the City of Salem, we feel staff, we need every precious dollar we have for road and street maintenance, to operate our traffic signals, pave our streets, stripe them, maintain them, keep our streetlights turned on. We run a deficit currently, and what we need to adequately fund those, those activities. So, staff's recommendation was that council oppose the, the opening up of these trust funds for their uses, but that council may want to indeed take a position supporting other types of funding for these different modes of travel and these different projects.
Councilor Dickey?
Thank you. Thanks, that does help clarify a couple of questions that I had. Did you, because one of the things that I noticed when I looked at this was, this was like, seemed like an all-or-nothing deal, like, the thing that jumped out at me was, could you keep the same level of funding and then recommend an amendment to the bill that would, any funding over and above what's already allocated to, you know, streets and highways, could go to some of these other alternatives? I, I mean, did you discuss that at all, or...
What we discussed was that there's really two methods that the legislature might consider doing this, and I would first stress that all these joint resolutions do is refer to the voters an opportunity to vote on the matter. How the monies would then be allocated in the future would depend on a future legislative session that would then allocate the monies in the state highway fund to these different travel modes. That could be done either by taking money off the top of the fund at the state level, or it could be legislated that individual local governments and counties spend a certain percentage of their allocation on these different travel modes. In either circumstance, there would be less money available for your basic street maintenance and operation.
Yes, Councilor Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. I will register a no vote on this recommendation. I feel, I mean, I see both sides of this, and I, I just feel like, you know, I'm probably more neutral with some, you know, tweaks to this. I would feel comfortable with what's being recommended, but at this time, I can't do that.
Okay, all right.
I believe that, I think, the, just, a clarification would be what you're doing, Councilor Dickey, and Councilor Clem, is registering a no on those two specific bills, but a yes vote on all of the other recommendations.
Okay, we actually haven't had, had a vote yet, so now we'll proceed to the vote. Councilor Bennett had made the motion, and I don't remember who gave the second. Oh, thank you, Laura. Councilor Tesler seconded. All those on, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's see. Councilor Bennett, you pulled item 43F.
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion regarding that?
I, yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Okay. And Councilor Bennett, would you like to address your motion?
Yeah, just, just briefly, Madam Mayor, I, I want to make sure it's very clear, if this motion passes, that, to folks in the community, that Olinger Pool will be open for swimming lessons, recreational swimming. It's standard use. Last year, we had Walker Pool open. This year, we'll have Olinger Pool open. Despite any decisions being made at the school district, this would allow us to keep our aquatics program intact for one more summer, and this is always problematic as we head forward. I think we've all heard the reasons for it from citizens who will pack the council chamber on issues related to the swimming pools during our budget sessions, to explain to us very clearly how important this is to the community as a whole, and particularly to the community's children, who are given a real opportunity to learn to swim. It also, I believe, really augments the service being provided by private pool owners, as well as the Crox Center, but we are not to a point yet that we can abandon these other public swimming programs. So, I really urge the council to continue this program, authorizing the manager to enter into a contract to get this underway.
Are there further discussions? Councilor Clem, and then Councilor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to also chime in that it was difficult last year, not having Olinger open and yet having Walker open, and I appreciate all the patience and considerations that, we look at the fact that these are city facilities, not just ward facilities, and so I think staying in, being able to fund basic youth programs such as this... And so I think staying in, being able to fund basic youth programs such as this saves lives as well. That swim instruction with the River City that we have and all the waterways is still a vital function that this city needs to be involved in. So I thank Counselor Bennett for his comments and urge the council to support this.
Thank you, Counselor Clem. Counselor Clausen?
Just to be totally upfront, I work for the school district. I don't think it affects me here, but I would echo both comments here. I think this is a great thing that would be great for the city to maintain.
Fine. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, similar statement. My spouse works for the Facilities Department for Salem Kaiser School District, so potential conflict of interest, no pecuniary benefit to them over this, so I don't have any problem with proceeding and voting on that.
Okay. Fine. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from counselors? All right. All those in favor of the motion to accept the staff reports, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening.
Yay.
Let's see. And there are information reports. Would any of the counselors like to address the information reports under item number seven? All right. Hearing none. And we have no further public hearings. I don't believe anyone else has signed up for public hearings. The next agenda item is ordinances. We have one set for the first reading. Will the recorder please read the title?
Ordinance Bill Number 14-11 relating to roller skating and skateboarding, amending SRC 100.230.
We need a motion to move this to second reading?
Do we? Oh, okay.
Sure. I move to advance ordinance bill number 1411 to second reading.
All right. Is there a second? Seconded by, let's see, who? Counselor Nanki. All right. It's been moved by Counselor Dickey and seconded by Counselor Nanki. All right. To move this ordinance to second reading, all those in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a discussion?
There isn't.
Counselor Dickey, I'm sorry.
Sure. I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
First, I guess this would be for staff. Thank you for coming. Could you just briefly, this is the first I've heard of there being a problem with skateboarding at the senior center. Could you just kind of outline the problem and kind of the process that got you here tonight?
Marilyn Daly, Director of Center 50+. Actually, this has been a reoccurring problem even going back to our old facility on Erickson Street, and what we're finding is folks are using the parking lot as a cut-through, and also actually beyond that, bringing carloads of people over to actually skateboard on the premises. And up to this point, we've just been able to ask, you know, share with them, our population, and some of the risk factors. Sometimes they leave, sometimes they don't, but unfortunately, because we don't have an ordinance, we really don't have anything that we can enforce. So beyond that, the main thing that we've been seeing the last few months is that we have a pathway that runs from the parking lot to the front door, and that's become kind of like a racetrack, per se. And so that's kind of what brought this to areas, is we, our folks don't really have a place to walk beyond that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Follow-up question, Mayor?
Okay. Yes, thank you, Counselor Dickey.
Thank you. And I think this might be for the city attorney. Does this limit skateboarding on the sidewalks around the senior center, or is this only in the parking lot?
It would be whatever is legally described as Lot 1, Hollywood Station Number 2. So whatever that legal description is.
Anybody?
Let's pull up the map. That would not include the sidewalk.
Okay. So someone who's just traveling through on something that rolls, and they're on the sidewalk, they would not be prohibited by this ordinance, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If it doesn't occur on the legal, on the lot, as described here, it would not be a violation.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear, because I've had a couple of constituent questions regarding that, and I think there's been some miscommunication that possibly the sidewalks around the senior center also would be prohibited, so I just wanted to make sure that that was stated very clearly.
I have a question that related to that, then. Do seniors often, do people who attend functions at Center 50+ often park on the street and need to cross those sidewalks to get to the facility, or are they parking within the parking lot?
Currently, we only have parking along Portland Road for, on the, on-street parking, and so that hasn't been a concern.
Okay.
Along Portland Road. It's a wide enough sidewalk. The ones that we're talking about in our parking structure or parking lot are much, are narrower than that.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So then we have a motion to move this to second reading. All right. I don't remember who moved the motion. Oh, Counselor Dickey moved the motion.
And I seconded it.
To accept the staff report, and Counselor Nanki seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And we have no second readings, and we have no one signed up for public comment. We have no new business items. There are no mayor's items or counselor's items. Is there any other further business to discuss this evening? Hearing none, we will close the meeting. Thank you.
We are going to executive session.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, we are going to.
We are having an executive session.
I love being executive.